Your worship, I'll just get this going live one moment, please.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Ms. Russo. Appreciate that.
You're live, your worship.
Great, thank you. All right, Council, I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for February twenty first, twenty twenty three to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make the motion for me? Counselor Devlin, second by Counselor Jerry. All those in favor? Motion's carried. We're gonna go right into six A delegations and presentations, so we have also Resort, Jason Keldre, Peter Nielsen, and colleagues here. So, Jason, Peter, take it away.
Hi, your worship. Thank you again for your time. Thank you for welcoming us back to complete to really come do a little deeper dive into what we started last week. For, wanted to just introduce, we have put out a couple of people with this. I think everyone knows Jason. Jason is heading up development for us here at Resort. And he speaks all the development language. I'm the lay guy in the room, so if you have a lay question, I'll maybe translate from that, but. And then we also have Brad here. He's with Caddo Golf. We thought we'd bring a rep along in case he has any questions concerning Caddo Golf development. And then Dan, he's a GM of Sub-Courteers, he's soon, hopefully soon, moving on to Resort. As they're the hotel we're in the ground right now, this key component of our next phase of development. So if you have questions about that, he's here to answer those questions here. Just in general, you know, coming out of the last meeting, I think it was clear that everybody wanted some more time, so really happy that we were able to carve this timeline today. Tough time for our guys in operations because it's one of the busiest days of the year, but sweating and looking to shovel, that's because I was chasing line breakers around all morning. But, you know, super excited to be here and really have the time. You know, we really pretty much went through our presentation last time. So there's, it's more, I think more of this, this is more of having time to have the discussion and dive deeper on details. And, you know, I think from my perspective, we would love to just, you know, go around and talk about what is anything you've been able to get out of the presentation that you that we forwarded recently and answer questions and just have a general dialogue, you know? As we move forward, obviously, we're really excited to be getting ramping up our development, taking this resort to the next level. And, you know, that recognizing that there's going to be a lot of things going on. I'd really like to make the commitment that we would happily have meetings like this and conversations and you know, take the opportunity to spend time and answer questions as we go through this process, recognizing it's really impactful in Revelstoke. And the council serves to have insight as to what's happening, so. I mean, the staff and just figure out how that works over time, but we definitely would like to see more frequency. I think dialogue just helps everything along and yeah, if you're speaking from a position of knowledge and, you know, you can feel comfortable in a position, etc. Yeah, so, you know, we don't really have a presentation's kind of gone through, so if we want to open the floor to questions, Jason, let's see.
No, I think that's exactly it. I think we have the, we didn't share the discussion document last week because we wanted to provide context. There are a lot of pictures can be, as some people on the table pointed out, can be very impactful, so context really matters. So as we go forward and we come before council, whether it's quarterly or what sort of frequency it is, we'll provide some materials at the council meetings to provide, you know, discussion aids essentially. And then, and then, and then that's really what we did here. But yeah, to reiterate Peter's point, we look forward to this new council and it's sort of a new shift in the way Northland is looking at the resorts. It's been a big shift at Northland at the top end with Bob retiring and Tom taking over and quite a few more staff changeovers. So we're going into a new era here and in that new era with Northland and the new era with new council, we just commit to being here for council to direct some discussion as well as the multitude of applications we'll have in front of council. So we have things next week around staff housing that will come to this table to consider, but those don't really provide a good venue for council to to come back at the proponent on the broader picture. So that's what we want to open up.
I think that was, you know, kind of that's the spirit of what we've been trying to do in these last sessions was really still, Jason, was to provide context on the overall picture. So as you're seeing individual, because when an individual application comes in, you only get those that are in the curse clause of the detail of that, of whatever that application is. Try and give you context of what the larger plan, what we're trying, well, larger plans exist, where we're trying to go with those larger ones.
Yeah, in the last year, we've been, we have regular meetings with staff, if not monthly, more frequently. So we have a lot of dialogue going on at the public service level. But, you know, we went into an election cycle, now there's a council, so now we want to open up that dialogue a little bit more at this level as well.
All right, thanks gentlemen. All right, Council, I'm going to go around the table and basically ask you, so the premise of this was last, last meeting, some of you wanted more information and that was voted down and then the second reading was failed. So I want to go back to that second reading information about density and movement of density. So some of you have some questions regarding that. You'll have some other questions about other things, but let's start really with what your concerns are or what your questions are related to movement of the density from the resort base to what we see down Camozzi Road or Nickel Road and and then some of the potential for housing as we move along with that. So any questions, any concerns? So Counselor Lucille, I'll go to you first. Do you have any questions regarding that movement of that density? You had some questions regarding going into zones four and five. I don't know whether your questions got asked in the way that you felt comfortable.
Yeah, they kind of did. I think it's just looking to put prior, figure out the priorities that the resort is going to have. It's great to talk about community housing, but when that actually gets started, gets built, is, I think, a higher concern to the town than it is to RMR. So figuring out what we can work towards collectively to prioritize things is my biggest concern. And then, yeah, just like the eligible bed units that you guys have for construction right now versus what you're going to be eligible to construct with your uphill infrastructure with like the three lifts that you guys have planned over the next couple of years and what that opens up for your ability to shift the density.
I'll start in probably interested. You know, from our uphill capacity, I mean, we still have quite a bit of space or I guess capacity for from a venue perspective based on just what's existing. That, you know, uphill capacity is required for us to start doing things. However, in the lifts world, as you, the town has also been growing, you know, but in a very, pretty aggressively fast paced over the last five, seven years, and that capacity impacts experience. So our plan and stated goal is to try and keep our lift system well ahead of getting bottlenecked. The town grows too, not only our basic area lands, but including the town, there are too much growth before lifts go up. We'll have, you know, put the experience for people at risk. And that is, we want to have outstanding experience for, for our guests all the way through this whole process, so. That answers that question. From a priority standpoint, you know, community housing is a priority for us as well. Our, our staff are, you know, our staff are members of the community too, and we hear that clear from them that they'd like some opportunities to, you know, different types, styles of opportunities for, for housing. And so from a community perspective, we very much view ourselves as active members of the community. You know, our team, a lot of, we have a lot, there's a lot of misconception that we don't hire, you know, entry level staff, but we have a lot of managers and tradespeople who are keen to get in work or have different styles of housing compared to just, you know, the housing that we have in the ground that we can, you know, have started construction on is really, is really more for that entry level staff and seasonal staff. But opportunities for other, the other layers in our team is a real priority for us. And on top of that, the lands that we're thinking about that have potential for that are easy build rights, you know? There's access to services and it's flat, which is not a lot of our land, so. So that answers your question.
Yeah. I can expand on that, but from a technical perspective, from a technical perspective, in terms of our bed units, we're maybe twenty-five percent of what we're entitled to without doing any more improvements on hill. But a good business case on hill means you're far ahead, just as Peter talked about. So we're not constrained by current investments on the mountain today. That is not a constraint around, around building. We're not forced to build additional lifts for quite a while before more bed units would, would, we wouldn't have to invest more on the mountain. We are making priority investments at the ski hill, including lifts for experience base for future investment and people's experience at the mountain. Also things like staff housing. We've got, we've got two buildings. We've got one building, a building permit, three buildings, a DP that are variance coming to the DP next week for accelerated staff housing project. But those are not required for another six or seven hundred or eight hundred bed units. And that, and at that point, it's only ten percent. So the, the resort is making investments ahead of the requirements because they make good business sense and experience events and their long-term investments that pay back in time. And that's Northland's model. They buy stuff, they keep it, they improve it, and they keep it. That's, that's their model. They do not have, until this year, they haven't had a development at all. So that's not their model. Their model is buy it, improve it, operate it. And that's how they've grown. In terms of the technical side of development, Peter pointed out that land at the bottom, where as you go into Nicole and Airport, other than this, this map here, and I'll point it out with the cursor, this land is not owned by Northland on the corner. It's this block in here. And you can see it was cleared not to the edges, a tree line buffer, and that's the opportunity to create a community within itself that's onto its own. It would have been either a driving range, but if we can move the driving range up more adjacent to the golf course, that makes much more sense. And then we can do a much higher density development. And if we go to four stories as the resort neighborhood plan allows, right against the bank, it'll, it'll be below the tree line, it'll be below the top, it should blend right into the community there. And we have some examples in this deck near the end of San Hayes, but a couple of them have apartment buildings against that bank. And that makes sense from a planning perspective because it doesn't dominate the landscape. But in terms of lowest hanging, through the earliest opportunity, this community housing lands is by far the easiest to develop. So if there's any priority to bring housing to market, this is going to be the fastest, easiest way to go. And, you know, with this tax amendment, if adopted, we have, we have, we would like to have a subdivision application to create the blocking for that, to find partners. Even maybe CMHC for, for projects within that this calendar year. I mean, we started this process with staff about ten months ago. The application came in, 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 in August. So it is, we're working through it, but our intent is to move this stuff to market sooner than later.
Okay, for that. Further questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess just a concern that I've brought up is having that land, so that would be zone five, but nickel in airports, having that land be used for mobile trailers to house like construction staff and stuff like that, is that your intention, you know, using that?
No, we've, we've got an application that council will see next week for some prefabricated housing, went to APC. We're looking at, right now, we have a three staff building complex. Just the timing to get the three buildings built has been a challenge. So we're looking at interim measures where we take the site of the third building and build some, some rapid deployment housing. And just to be really clear, that's not any housing that you've seen in Revelstoke before. It's purpose built for this market. This snow load. It's, it's not, it's not a reused product that's already here, that I think I've heard around town as well.
So that project, I get you, that project is to go adjacent to where the staff housing is.
It's actually on the site of building three. So two are, are both are in the ground as far as by clearing and one's under BP. The site of building three is where we're looking at that.
Yeah, so just while we got this, so I don't come back to the conversation. So just a few questions on the get asked these questions different times. So the, you had a temporary use permit up in Johnson Heights before, and then you elected not to do that. The rationale behind that employee housing, and it's, and it's not really important to me, but I just try, so mostly so I can answer people that ask that question.
Number one is that the time limit on it made it not make fiscal sense.
And that was a three year, right? So, okay, so basically, yeah, okay, that's fair. And then, can you go back to the, oh, I get, no, that's fine. It's all the same. The, so on the, the denser housing, longer airport way, I'm just going to confirm to make sure it's too bad people can't see this online, but this, this area here, you don't have that ownership, is that correct?
That's correct. We don't own that.
This here, you own this part here. Okay. And so just a question when looking, and I know these are conceptual at this point. Is a major factor for this sort of road coming across here, kind of splitting that is because of the ownership issues I'm assuming along there?
Well, I think for housing density, a grid system will provide the highest, the least amount of infrastructure frontage and the highest density opportunity. It's just from a purely practical civil engineering perspective. So if we look at it to, to get community housing in, if you can reduce those input costs, your, your end product cost goes, is the most efficient. So putting in a grid form of, of road systems like that, but if you look at the bottom right, you can see this one doesn't have a road right along the, along the, the edge. Now, I'd also preface that these accesses out onto Nicole are not approved accesses by the city engineering department. These are concept plans. And we need to have a conversation with some building partners who want to partner with us on what type of product. We're going to start with, you know, we've got a partner that's interested in purpose built rental, four stories maintained for rent. We'd be interested in that as well. We have people that are interested in doing some six plexes, four plexes, two plex product. And we also have some smaller cottage lot, which would be single family house with an ADU in the back, or twice we go on the unit in the back. That, so the lowest sort of density per lot would be two units, potentially three, and then larger lots would have multifamily.
And then, and then just on that area again, so the, the four stories, so that's currently the limitations within the, within our bylaws as four stories.
We'll be looking at, at construction and market constraints, not stolen by law constraints.
Right, so that's your ma- major.
Yeah.
So the lower, the lower rises makes more.
Building code, cost efficiency to build, those sorts of things, and available contractors that are comfortable working at certain heights. I mean, once you get over four stories or five stories, you start to have a different skill set.
Yeah, understood.
So it's, you know, we, we, we are building much taller buildings than that at the resort, but they're not quick. So we recognize that for this to be, we would like to get some stuff going with some level of experience. So we may compromise on a story or two in the, you know, saying that we can get it to market five years earlier or four years earlier.
So i- is it okay if I can carry on? So on the employees housing, so you got that, those entitlements. Last council for the employee housing, so you said there's going to be something coming for later on. Where, what's the status on the buildings that you have approval to proceed with and when do you anticipate completion? Can you just sort of overview that whole thing? Because I think it's useful for all of council.
Yeah. So, so the, the application, the DP, which was approved, was for three buildings, I think there are ninety-two unit buildings. Majority was for two bedrooms, mixed one-twos. And we've gone, so that was, that's through as a building permit. We have a building permit for building one proceeded, and we have permission to do excavation for building two with the building permit coming. I should see that pretty soon. So that's where that, for those two buildings.
So has it started on building one? Has it start?
Yes, always.
So where, where is it at then? And I'm asking some of these questions from ignorant, or not intentionally ignorant. I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. Yeah, so what, what stage is the first building at then?
Uh, excavation's complete, so.
Excavation.
Yeah, we're not very far away from looking at foot.
Okay, so now it'll probably be in the spring, which is just real soon. And then when do you anticipate the first building to be completed?
Well, we're hoping to start on building two and if, at the same, they'll be.
Going together.
Not quite together, but you know, just off, off a bit, but like, I think, four months.
Right.
They're looking at twenty-four to thirty-six months for completion from beginning, so.
Twenty-four to thirty-six, so that's putting us in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Okay, so if things go really, really well, then you'll, they'll be done for twenty twenty-five. So that inventory isn't going to be available, and that's what's prompting
Correct.
the temporary, preformed things.
Yeah, there, you know, two things. One, we need to be able to establish a workforce to be able to complete the construction projects in a timely manner. So that housing will be dedicated to construction. We'll actually be building the buildings right next to it.
Okay. That, that's good for now.
Absolutely. Given seasonal and weather and labor constraints.
We think it's a good plan.
These are the solutions we're trying to come up with.
So on the, I think you're calling it community housing back on Airport Way. Is that the term that you're kind of using for the?
Not really. It's, it's, we will probably come up with some sort of brand for that area.
Yeah.
We look at other resort communities or communities that have turned into resort communities that used to be mining or logging villages in the US. And we look at where they've done well and where they haven't, and we're trying to gather a bunch of that, that sort of feedback and then try and take the, take the things that they did well and more importantly, not fall into the same traps that they have. But we will create its own brand, its own feel. It'll be, we'll try and, try and create a, a sense of pride of, of ownership and residence there. And how we do that, we're not a hundred percent sure.
Right. Yeah, that certainly the branding from a marketing for, even for our conversation, because if we start using terms like community housing, it can convey different things. That's not likely reflective of what you're trying to.
Like, I think the idea would be that it's, it's associated with the city of Revelstoke or Arrow Heights, more of an Arrow Heights community than it is a resort community, would be one way to put it.
And one of the other key differentiators is we'll, we'll be restricted around short-term rental. It is not resort housing. Resort housing is going to be in, in the resort proper, so up in this area. Through here, we've got, we've got lands to expand to the south for resort housing. We have this area around the golf course. I mean, we, the planner just lauded it in similar sized lots to Arrow Heights, so it would fit in across the street. This is not going to be a plan that will probably translate into a future subdivision application, but it's, it's something to show. You know, the ownership group, hey, we could do this if you wanted to just follow what Arrow Heights has done. But this area up here would be resort housing. It's separated vertically quite a bit as you climb Nicole, it goes up steep, it's up the top. The community housing or the, or the, you know, the, the non-resort housing would be at the bottom of the hill. So, you know, as we go forward and we develop amenities for the resort, amenities for, for guests that are mandatory contributions from resort guests and resort owners. These people wouldn't be contributing to that. They might have access through some sort of user agreement, but they're not resort housing meant as revenue for nightly stays. It is, or, or, or a, or a weekend place. This is intended for and will be, will take measures to enforce that it's, it's people who live there.
For residents.
Yeah.
So just on, on that, that's your intention at this point, but with the master development agreement, it could be short-term rent as
As it's.
Today, right?
Yeah.
And then, you know, that gets into, should I keep going? Okay, the, you know, that's, that's an interesting kind of thing because that's some of the concerns, okay, some of the social aspects and what does that look like in the future? There's certainly a component in the community that would say it absolutely shouldn't be allowed for short-term rentals in, in that area that, and that's kind of consistent with what you're suggesting. The, I, I, you know, one, one of the things is when the, with the proposed density shift is, okay, well, what, what kind of protections are, are in place for those kind of things? And I don't know if now's the time to speak to that or if that's later on, but those are, you know, some of the concerns that because there can be, you know, good intentions and yet if market is something else, then that it might end up being something else.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, we have, we've got a decent amount of time today. So we can, I think we've got a couple of different things that we want to sort of, we want to have open sort of discussion about the resort proper. And then we've got an applications active around this density, or basically a text amendment to the zoning bylaw. And the text amendment to the zoning bylaw is sort of a compartmentalized piece that I think we can address technically. But the resort proper, there's a lot of information that we can discuss, or, you know, there's, there's conversation last week around Williamson Lake and, and things like STR, for example, that aren't text amendment specific. They're resort overall specific. So I, if, do we want to break down the conversation and say, okay, let's have a resort discussion in general, and then at the end allocate some time for the text amendment, or do you want to try and?
Well, I think we've already started that text amendment and stuff, and that seemed to be one of the biggest concerns going forward. Let's deal with that first. We'll get to overall. But I think it's going to morph back and forth, Jason, just with what I'm seeing. So I'd like you to answer the questions as they come up. I know it's not going to be in a, in a concerted way. We're going to try. But these are the concerns that council's hearing from the community, but also they may have themselves. So I'd like to, you know, let's approach them as we're here, because I don't want the conversation to fall off the table. When we leave here, I want everybody to be fully informed and feel comfortable with what you're hearing. So, Counselor, I'm going to go back to you. And so you're hearing, you want to talk about what you were just brought up.
Yeah, I'm just picking up the little pieces as, as they come into the conversation, and it's an interesting thing about, okay, where, where is the resort going? And then the specifics around the proposed density shift. And I, you know, it's the, it's a difficult, it's difficult to, well, I, I just can't, I don't think we can actually separate the, the discussion. So with the, with the density shift, from my perspective, there is so many long-term implications that, that I feel that we as a council have a responsibility to be cognizant of and protect those community interests. So that's one of the big things. Definitely, that's a driving force for, for me. And so, but we can try and sort of keep to the density shift. I will say that I have hesitations and continue to have hesitations. But maybe there'll be some others that want to talk at this point.
So, yep, well, I want to, I want to hear what your concerns are as we move forward, because I want to get, get through all of the concerns that each of us have today, because I think it's imperative that we hear and see exactly what is, is everybody's concerned about. So Counselor Cherry, I'll ask you, do you have any concerns or questions at this point?
I've actually asked most of my questions. I got to see this with the APC as well as on council, Alaska made the whole. The conversations I'm having, everybody seems, for the most part, very supportive of this density shift. I haven't heard anything negative about it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a formal density shift. It's a flexibility to allow density to move, spawn into good land planning and, and market conditions and other constraints that we just don't know yet, like geotechnical, environmental, civil.
Oh, and I'm on board with that. You know, I'm not expecting to see a brand new master plan as something that you're not allowed to do. I don't expect any corporation, any private entity to spend the money and time doing that for no, potentially no reason. So I'm going to pass the mic here to anybody else that wants to ask.
Counselor Stupner.
Jason just mentioned that, you know, the, the proposed text amendment is to shift density, but I also want to be perfectly clear that by allowing this text amendment, it's still going to come back before council, before any permanent changes are going to be made. That, that's my understanding. Is that correct? And then my other question, if you could go to side eight or the, the one that had the zoning eight with the, it was housing with the.
This one?
Yeah, community housing, perfect. So with, with the amount of density that's right there in, in zone eight with all those houses. Yeah, community housing, perfect, so with with the amount of density that's right there in in zone eight with all those housing. What's kind of the the proposed element to get all the workers that are in that, because that's, I'm assuming that's for for the workers, for the employees? If I'm correct, so what's the what's the proposed element to get the workers from there up to the village, are you guys going to be like, is it going to be? Shuttle vehicles, um because I mean, as you guys know, there's there's the elementary school that's right there. It's always been a, you know, a loud voice in the community saying, you know, I I've been getting for the kids' safety. You know, there there is a lack of infrastructure that will be addressed, I'm sure at some point in time, um but just so we can have that conversation maybe now.
Our preference is that our employees take no parking spots. That would be, I mean, point blank, that's our preference, I mean, we've we have from day one funded staff shuttles. Um only funded them and we continue to plans are expect that. And I think you'll see some things coming before council over the next little while around transportation plans that uh it's a passion for me. Um about getting people out of their cars, maybe there's no, I'd love to see a lot more of our locals utilizing the ski shuttle systems and transit systems. But there's work to be done and improve them, but uh our intention would be that as many of those people are on shuttle to the resort as possible.
I understand in that is we want everybody in town not taking parking, as Peter said, and I and you know, this is a transit. Concern, not necessarily the person here concerned, um but I I mean, as I understand, we're one third partners with municipality and with BCA Transit. We are your biggest private partner with transit and we want to stay there and we want to keep that transit getting better and better. The less people in in wanting to sleep on a vehicle going across the so it up to the resort, the better and the better for the uh. For the uh for the school zone as well.
Well, and just from an experience standpoint for for Rebel Stokes guests, um it's a better experience to get dropped off in the bus loop. And walk a few feet to the to the lift than it is to park five hundred meters, four hundred meters away.
And so, uh Mr. Black, multi purse purpose uh. Um pathway that's going up uh going up Nickel Road is going to be paved in the spring, is that correct?
Uh your worship to. Yes, your worship to entree members of council, the multi use path that is on the south side of Nickel from Park. Up to the new roundabout will be paved as soon as we can, really, this spring. Um the developer, uh Mackenzie Village will be completing the sidewalk fronting, Mackenzie Village all the way down to the park. And entrance into Arrow Heights School will be completed this year. Undergrounding of overhead power lines along that section will happen also. And uh just last week, I met with the transit team and um as councils were meeting the BC Transit about. How to consolidate the two systems into one concise, cool system and. BC Transit, our operator and our partners are all very keen to see this happen for next fall. So lots and lots of positive changes happening on the transit and transportation front in the community.
Great, thank you, Mr. Black. All right, councillor Stipner.
Uh one other question, just in regards to like the 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 public process, maybe uh Mr. Simon could 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 address this. Is this just going to be a a binder in the planning and development office, or is this going to be, you know, when when it when it comes to the public? How is how is the public going to be informed, how is that exchange of information going to happen? What's that process going to be like? Could you maybe elaborate a little bit on that for us, please?
Uh to your worship councillor, so you're referring to specifically the zoning by law text amendment and what engagement is undertaken for that amendment itself?
No, just well, that that and then like the future for for when these approval process come comes into to play.
So a couple of different pieces there for this particular application that council's considering with respect to the shifting in density. Were required to advertise in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks informing the public of the nature of the bylaw amendment.
Okay.
We have to have a public information binder like you're referring to, have it available during the whole advertising period so that people can come in, take a look. Uh staff are always available to answer any questions, I haven't had any any feedback, any comments, any questions on this particular application, so I mean, again, if council is hearing anything from the public. Our door is always open for you guys to send someone in to have a pre-op meeting with us or or a meeting on the nature of the application rather. So that's one piece with respect to this particular application. As we move forward and as we continue to work with the resort and as the resort starts to ground truth, solidify some of their development plans. And part of that is obviously dependent on this text amendment and some shifting of some density. We're one hundred percent in favor of further collaboration consultation with the community. That's something where staff want to continue to work with the resort to say, okay, what are the pieces from a process perspective and where can we work to say? Where do we get feedback from the community? We have to be careful, because if you want to go up to the community every time that the resort must put a shovel in the ground and they need a development permit. Well, council's legal box that we're in at that point is a little bit more limited than with other stages, for instance, if we wanted to do a neighborhood plan. The feedback that you get from the public is only so useful up to a certain point, because they have to also stay within that box. So then you get the public where they're concerned, they're providing feedback and they think that it's not being considered, well, it's because we're dealing with a technical development permit that. Is figuring out how we deal with river crossings. So we ought to be really cognizant of that, and then lastly, as we move forward, um you know, you guys are going to see the development approvals procedure by law coming forward soon. That's wearing it in the nitty gritty that will apply to all applications across the board, so notification requirements, when in the stage that's going to occur. Public information meetings, is there specific rules and requirements we want to have for public information meetings with respect to different types of applications? So there's a few moving pieces with respect to that application or with respect to public engagement, but for the application that. Is the one that really is, I think, the the main focus of the conversation. It's advertising the newspaper and then the public information binder, then any meetings with staff is necessary.
Okay. So I'd answer your question.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good, any other questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, any councillor Palmer, do you have anything for you, you'd like to?
Yeah, yeah, uh you know, tons actually, um can just going back to the presentation last week. Uh in just trying to get this together in my mind, so you had that. Talked about the two thousand three entitlements with the master development agreement, so I'm bouncing away from uh. Miracles, I'm bouncing away from the this uh density shift, um but it's relevant to the to that. So that, so going from that to um. Uh to twenty nineteen, so what what changed with the master development agreement? As far as your entitlements from the the original plan that was adopted?
Nothing.
So what happened in twenty nineteen?
So so there we're we're balancing land use authority a little bit. Uh land use authority over crown land is clearly right in the crowns, perky, right? So the master development agreement, when originally conceived, this entire area wasn't in the city of Rebel Stoke. So when 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 a when the crown under the ski hill development policy comes forward, the developer has a has a concept plan. And a phasing of of development, so pay phasing of improvements. Most of those refer to lifts and things in parking lots and things like that, that the that the the. That the uh province is more interested in, because those are investments on crown land that trader. Um the bed unit entitlement that the developer then would go build uh for profit hotels and things like that to help. Recapture some of the capital spent on crown land. Um so this was a a looking at the phasing that we had um in the uh on the mountain. And and looking at changing or not providing a notice to the province that we would like to change some of the phasing. In other words, if you want to build a lift from the bottom up or from the top down, that's a notification to the province. We want to build lift fifteen ahead of lift five, that's a notification to the province, it doesn't require approval. If the province will refer it and let everybody know, but it doesn't require approval, it's it's firmly entrenched in the master development agreement. That flexibility is firmly entrenched in the master development agreement. And the same with when and where um current bed units are built. So that this is a little bit of the discrepancy in the official community plan, the master development agreement, the text of zoning by law and on the table. We've got an inconsistency that ends at that table, and that's what we're trying to do is create a little bit of flexibility in that table without throwing it away. To line it up a little bit more with the with the other pieces of applicable legislation, if that makes sense.
We've got Kelly Northcott on with the uh resort branch, I don't know if you want to get started, Kelly?
Yeah, so and then I'll just clarify the question, and and so. You know, what what changed, so was it a lift change, was was there a bunch of little little things like that, or what 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 actually changed?
Well, we're required periodically just provide an update of what's happening. Um part of the biggest change, and we can see as far as conceptual plans. Their original plans had a whole bunch of land that is not owned by the resort, which is what was elements on it, and that was one of the things that was being.
All right, I have Kelly Northcott here, um Kelly.
Hi there.
Good question, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for uh letting me attend the meeting and um. Essentially, I can answer more detail, but I think the question was um in twenty nineteen, uh we accepted a. Master plan update from from RMR, um essentially under the MDA, there's if there's no change to the overall bed units. The province doesn't have a statutory decision, but from time to time, sometimes every five years. Roughly uh developer or the resort tenure holder submits a master plan update. Essentially to show kind of the progress they've made to date, where the lifts are, if they do um. Uh like as Peter I think mentioned, he wanted to move a lift from, you know. Instead of building it next year, build it five years from now or vice versa, there's some flexibility and ability to do that. Um that's certainly also true within the development area, which we kind of consider the base area. Um I think Bill might have mentioned in the last meeting, like there's flexibility under our policy to move. Um for market demands, engineering, environmental needs, those kind of things, to move. Different types of housing around, whether it's hotels, multifamily or single family, and to really build that into a phasing schedule as well. Um so it does provide some flexibility, uh that also has to obviously be done. Like we we set it out for referral, but we're not making a hard statutory decision for those changes. Hopefully that's a bit clearer.
I'd answer your question, councillor.
Um partially, but it might not be super important. It's harmful, and I understand, and I'm getting, uh I guess, educated on the the process and the need. Uh the specifics, I'm extracting some assumptions for that, it might not be super important on on that.
I think a key tenet of our policy and what what happens under the MDAs is essentially it's called the perform and reward system, but. Um as the on-hill lift development takes place, the they actually can, you know, build more bed units within the base. Um our policy kind of dictates that there's a balance, so you don't want to have too much capacity at the base or too much. Um capacity on the hill, just to try and strike that balance, so. Um essentially, at the end of their phase one, which they kind of, which they are under the twenty nineteen plan, they have a certain amount of bed units that they've earned. Uh so far, as they move through phase two, they earn another uh allotment of bed units. I believe the total bed units for a complete buildup is approximately sixteen thousand six hundred, somewhere in that region.
Right. Uh it's uh, you know, it's interesting, the uh on the bed units, um. And I have no problem with that, uh it's interesting, this sort of contradiction, because you don't want to. Build capacity for the visitor experience in too much in advance, and yet we're in this sort of desperate housing, like. I I wouldn't be surprised if you had sixteen thousand bed units that you could today, a bit bit far fetched, but uh. You know, set set certainly into the thousands and bed units could be thrown on the market to like this instant and they would be filled and. Um and that's why you're going to be coming with these other applications. Just to the MD, if I may, uh so the. It was mentioned last week and has been mentioned, so the. So that I I think the word was inconsistencies from the master development agreement. Uh to the OCP and what those conflicts are and. I I I I feel that I need a a deeper understanding. I'm looking at this this whole relationship, the density shifting from a a local government perspective. Because that's my lens in the world, and of course, you're looking more from the uh development entitlements with the master development agreement. And uh and because we have different lenses looking on that, what what does that mean? Uh I I I I think might be a a a friction point. Um in, so if I used an example, uh you'll look at, you know, bed units and stuff, which I have no problem with the the bed units. The on the process of uh public engagement and involvement, so compared to other. Zoning and rezoning applications of that kind of thing, uh you know, we do put other developers through the paces and a a fair bit. And so I I I I guess it's a question right now, maybe we can't answer it entirely, but maybe in the top few. You know, what are the friction points between the ma- master development agreement and the OCP?
I I can help, maybe Mr. Simon can help too. Um actually, there isn't friction between the master development agreement and the OCP or the text of the bylaw, the zoning by law. The friction occurs almost exclusively at the table. Um it's a unique piece of 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 writing in this bylaw that I haven't seen elsewhere, I know. I know Mr. Simon's gone up for municipal council, like legal council for review, it's the previous CAO. Ron Matusi, again, you know, we've been talking about this for a while, because it is the one piece of municipal bylaw that doesn't match up with. With the OCP and and any amendment that changes zoning has to has to either comply with the OCP or amend the OCP. But but technically, council can waive public input and public hearing. For any zoning that's compliant with the OCP, because the OCP is your parent guidance document that requires public hearing. Prior to to adoption, the OCP is really the the province's mandated tool for municipalities. To take delegation of land use authority from the crown and and lay it out across the municipality. So if it doesn't comply with the OCP, there's a problem, if it does, then it should be fairly simple. Is the is the is how the legislation is set up to work anyway.
Mr. Simon.
Yeah, um just to kind of go off of that vein. MDA, high level contract between the developer and the province, you can build X amount of bed units in exchange for building X amount of infrastructure and amenities. One of those amenities being a golf course, that's right in the MDA. OCP kind of starts bridging the gap between what does that look like, and keep in mind, the MDA says, we don't really care. I'm simplifying obviously, but we don't care where these bed units go, we don't really care about the specific nitty gritty, we'll leave that to the local land use authority to figure out. You know, the technical elements, working within the the environmental constraints, geotech constraints, all that stuff, but the idea is that it's flexible within the MDA. You build your infrastructure on the hill, you get your bed units, the OCP really does do quite a good job at reflecting that, and it gets into some specific detail with. Policy guidance as to what development permit requirements need to be met as. The resort continues to develop in the future, and then we get into the zoning by law, and again, at at the highest level, the purpose and intent of the CDA zone. The uses that are prescribed for within that CDA zone do align with that MDA and the OCP. And CDA zone is interesting in the fact that it allows for different commercial uses in all zones. But then we get to this density table where no commercial space is allocated to it. It allows for multi-unit residential in all different development areas, but then we get to this density table where it's very, very severely restricted. So this density table really is the only thing that doesn't align with the concepts of the OCP and the MDA that say. The development of the resort is intended to be somewhat of a flexible concept within this area of land. So that it can adapt to market conditions and changing conditions within the community, as well as adapt to, I think there's good understanding when the MDA was adopted. That this is a complicated area to develop in, and we're seeing that as we're working with the resort through the development of the golf course right now. And you know, they've brought on several environmental teams and you have one of really the the leading edge environmental consulting firms now helping with. Guiding this through the process, which in my mind speaks to the complexity of the on-the-ground conditions. So that's why at the higher level, you always see there's going to be some flexibility in concepts of where the units are actually going to go. Then we just get to this table where it's kind of just like a firm block that says X amount of units here, X amount of units here. No flexibility to change where those units go, so that's the the major inconsistency we have. We can talk all day about other improvements that we can make with respect to process and how things are laid out in the CDA zone. But that's definitely separate from this this topic, that's something that, you know, the resorts were that we're aware of, that we're going to be working with them in the future. So it happens with bylaws over time, but the only inconsistency really is at a at a high level, anyway, that density table, that's the biggest.
And so as we move forward, that will be addressed.
So should this text amendment be approved by council? In my mind, in a perfect world, just like as we are continuing to revisit every single bylaw that the city has with respect to planning and development. Every single policy, every single process, we engage in that process with the resort so that there's greater clarity, and again, that's a much bigger, and that's a separate conversation. That's a multi-year process, but that's where we would eventually be going, so that the CDA zone. Make sure that there's not these inconsistencies, and to me, this is the the first step in that process. And it's it's a pragmatic approach to actually getting this accomplished, so that we can. And it's it's a pragmatic approach to actually getting this accomplished so that we can respond on the ground conditions. And we can take advantage of, in my mind, one of the biggest things that we have with this is. You know, a willingness to engage in the development of some community housing, which is such a dire need. We just went through this OCP process. But that was the number one thing we heard from the community is we want more more housing. So there's some flexibility and we have a developer that's entitled to short term rental right now that is willing to come to the table with a deep restriction. To not allow for short term rental. That's a, you know, from a planning perspective, a major benefit that we would see.
Can you just say that again? I just want to.
The the last piece?
Yeah, the last piece, yeah.
If if this flexibility in allowing, and again, it's still subject to city approval, keep in mind, but if there is that flexibility to allow the density to be shifted. And we have a developer who's currently entitled to short term rental, because the CDA zone is very, very liberal with its short term rental entitlements. It's permitted everywhere there, and there's no restriction on how much can be in there. We have a developer that's willing to come to the table to say, this area is a little bit separate from the rest of it. We don't want it to be for nightly stays and we're willing to de-restrict it. That we we fight with developers all the time to try and get them to do that, right? Especially when previous allowances have already been granted. So this is a very, you know, positive situation from planning perspective, from staff perspective, to try to work with the developer to. You know, eventually allow some shifting, and that to me is one of the biggest benefits that we can get from this is, you know, not only better planning on the ground, but. More community housing in an area that was previously identified to all go towards short term rental.
Thank you for that. Do you have a follow up with our other councillors?
Go ahead.
I believe Counselor Palmer asked the same question that I was going to ask. So thank you.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so just carrying on that conversation. And Mayor Soul is just, you know, if you're if there's concern that I'm being over consumptive and.
No, I want to hear what you have to say, so I will stop you if I have other councillors who want.
Yeah, good, perfect. So. I I guess there's a little bit, you know, talking to council and. And everyone, it there's a little bit of a contradiction. So in the hearing, okay, MDA, OCP, no problem. In general, other than there's problems with the zoning bylaw in general. No real problems between the zoning, OCP, and been working cleaning up and and thank you very much. And then we drill down a little bit further and we talk about this table. And I I'll state right away that I don't necessarily agree that it's a problem. In fact, I see some merits behind it. But then it comes down to this saying, okay, well, the. If I'm hearing correctly, the real, the only problem from your perspective, both the developer and from planning staff, is this table. And yet, our our this this proposal was all it was doing was just tinkering with the table, wasn't. So I I guess just from an academic perspective. Oh, by doing this density shift, we're just giving the developer more entitlements. Instead of saying that this table still exists, if if that's. Correct, or is or does this table magically become a good? A good table in alignment with the OCP and, you know, the zoning, OCP, a master development agreement.
And three words to Counselor Palmer, so it's not granting any more entitlements, it's just allowing for flexibility and where the existing entitlements may be located. On areas that are already pre-identified as resort lands, and that's one thing that. You know, from my perspective, and I came to this city as a bit of an outsider, and the biggest thing I noticed, and. I understand the stuff where I was coming from, obviously, and that's part of my job to understand it. But when I look through all of the planning documents that the city has adopted over the last ten years, and I look at a couple key maps. And one of the maps shows the neighborhood boundaries, and it shows the resort land use designation boundaries within the OCP. Those maps really do show the extent of the resort lands, and I'm not always sure that that's totally understood by the community, the lands that are already set up. To be developed for resort purposes. So we already have those high level planning documents that as a community. And this is the way it's been for the last, you know, fifteen fifteen or so years now. We've already identified these lands to be suitable for resort development purposes from that conceptual level, you know, that question for council of use and density. We've already set the densities that's prescribed for, we've already set the uses that are prescribed for, but then we have this table that. Forces a rigid approach to exactly where it can be located. Now. Is there planning merit to saying, okay, we have a big area of land, it's broken up into ten development areas? You know, let's make sure that we're prescriptive about which uses can go within which development area and how much density can go. There is certainly merit behind that theory, but what we're seeing in the current table is that it's incredibly overly prescriptive with minimal flexibility. And we're seeing, you know, the the best guess that I have is that this table was developed by. You know, some planners sitting around a table and trying to figure out this two thousand three resort development plan and trying to figure out how the bed units that were entitled into it. And the concepts on a map, how you could specify that within individual zones. You know, part of this is taking some some liberties and some assumptions, obviously, on how that table came to be, but I. I don't see any, you know, ground truthing that was done to ver to to validate that table. I don't see any robust planning analysis. It really just looks like it was taking the pictures that were on a map and the concepts that were applied. And trying their best to throw that in a table so that there was some level of certainty. So it's, you know, is there merit towards breaking things into sub areas and then delineating different densities? Perhaps, but if you're going to do that, in my view, especially when you're looking at something as complex as, you know, world class resort development, and we have this many bed unit entitlements. There has to be some level of flexibility, and this is where you're getting into the meat of. You know, what's actually contained in the text amendment, getting down to these numbers of thirty percent of the units from area one can be reallocated with no more than fifteen percent. Going to any one particular development area, that is what you're seeing as allowing for some flexibility, but not ultimate flexibility.
So I'm just going to make some comments, because I, again, having a different lens on this. In in how we use words and again, it's perspectives. And I I'll state, I'm going to state again, of course, you guys are saying things again as well. I'll state again, I'm not opposed in in section five, and I think it's five and six, or is it five and four? The immediate of. Five and six or five and four, four and five. So in four and five, I am not opposed to higher density. The. If it's done right, if it's done right. I disagree. And or I'll just instead of saying I disagree, I'll give a different perspective on the value of the table. The table does put some ability for us as council. To ensure that good development happens with other other community values. So I'm going to be talking. The biggest things is community values on access to Williamson Lake, viewscapes. Corridors, paths, hiking trails, which we've got this map, which is helpful. And so. On on all these, you know, one of the problems is we have one comprehensive development zone, C D zone. And one of the criticisms, which the planning staff, I think, concur with, is we've had. Development, comprehensive development for small places. For example, I think the one of Newlands Road was a comprehensive development. That, in my opinion, should not have been a comprehensive development. I'll also state that that Newlands Road, as an example, how it applies here, there was a lost opportunity of connectivity. For lower arrow heights into the community, big loss of opportunity in in. I'm, when I look at zone four and five. In in the values, the community values of Williamson Lake, the some of the riparian zones around there. The paths that people are already using through there, those community assets, I don't want to lose them. And quite frankly. With that table. Council has some leverage. And we can, there's certain things we can't force, I I understand that. But we have, one of one of the tools we have is denial, which we did last week, there was a denial. And and so. So that's, you know, I'm being like super transparent here on the game, on the game, from my perspective and looking. I I think those values, even with RMR, you know, they they're going to have a. A business perspective, but those business perspectives. Should can align with community values, so that's Williamson Lake. Ecosystems, connectivity. Some of the lost opportunities specifically with the resort, in my opinion, so we got this multi-use path, which is great. It's essentially another sub road against a road. It's not that experience that we see, the galloping goose experience. It's not the. The experience that you see in Whistler, that you you're have this feeling in nature, you're still going to feel like you're, same thing with on arrow heights. So some of those values that have been expressed very strongly. In in many components in the community, those community values is what I'm really after. One of the things I wondered, just again, on the same theme of this whole thing is. When we look at these like zone four and five, and I was thinking of this after the last meeting, so five, for example, where you have this more community oriented. Development concepts. Is. If we didn't, if we didn't have the C D eight, if we didn't have the master development agreement, we'd be looking at that area and and what's. What's best for that, hopefully, we would be. Our track record isn't the greatest, but hopefully that's. And and yet there's this complexity of the whole overall resort. There's a part of me that would say, okay. So say, for example, the zone five. What's what's the right density, including for the the developer? So it's your market, your, you know, your business. What's the right density there? And there's a part of me that just says, well, that would be so much better than this. You know. Mystical sort of shift that just is a broad, a broad thing, because there is a tool that we lose. And, you know, that might be a tool when, as we march ahead, because technically, you know, this even this conversation that we're having today, because of the development. Or the zoning amendment is is essentially killed. And you'll have to be looking at, okay, well, what do we do now? And and that maybe is an opportunity as to saying, well, why don't we look at that zone? Now, I don't know with the master development agreement, the OCP. What can we can we do and what can't we do? I do know that we can talk and come up with agreements, whatever that makes sense. And I'm really looking for that, that, you know, those wins. So I think that's just all my comments on that particular conversation. Ultimately, I want to get back to the the those community values at some point.
I'm going to go to staff first, Mr. Simon and Mr. Kelly.
Just a couple couple comments, I think that will be beneficial for through your worship to all of council. The OCP, you know, can boil it down even more, they need a development permit every time they come in for anything. There are pretty substantial policies and guidance contained within that OCP that we would use to evaluate. And I think that the onus is on, we're worried about things like protection of Williamson Lake, ensuring appropriate access. Promoting a conservation based design that keeps these natural amenities for the community, which I think everyone can agree is. We want to see that. We need to strictly apply these development permitting guidelines when we receive these applications. And in my view, the OCP does a pretty good job. At actually including some of those specific policies. And I apologize, the last council meeting, I was scrambling on the spot to try and figure out the specific policies. To answer the questions with respect to Williamson Lake. But that's certainly something that if council is interested, I can provide a little bit of information after the meeting and reference the specific policies, so that council gets a good understanding of. The approval framework and the applicable policies that staff and council would be using to evaluate subsequent development permits. And I think the question needs to become. If those policies are inadequate to protect the community values, then that becomes a conversation about whether or not the OCP is crafted accordingly. And from my perspective, the OCP does give a lot of tools that would be used to apply at future detailed development stages. Because that's when you really get into the nitty gritty of it. And then secondly, I do just want to provide some clarification, and the corporate officer can correct me if I'm wrong, but. The previous council meeting, the the motion to give second reading failed on a tie, so we're we're back to first reading. There's been no resolution that's been brought forward to deny the bylaw outright. So there was no affirmative vote on on anything last meeting, so it was all failed on a tie. And again, corporate officer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe council would need to pass a vote to actually deny the bylaw rather than just have a vote that fails on a tie at second reading. I know that's how we've dealt with it, you know, we had all the spot zoning applications that were coming forward for short term rental. And those ones all got specific resolutions to deny bylaws. Because otherwise, it creates a very. Confusing situation for council. If the direction to give second reading is just defeated. So there was no formal direction that was provided to staff last meeting.
I'm going to go to Counselor Palmer, you want to respond?
Yeah, I just, so as far as the sort of academic corporate officer stuff, I'll count on you guys to navigate that. And I don't want to detract from the conversation. It's it's important, it's it's kind of like a mute point until it's until it's important and that and then that. Which can happen with developments. So the, I'll leave that with you. Just getting back to. The Williamson Lake discussion that Mr. Simon was talking about. To me, that is like one of the most crucial things, because I'm not understanding, I don't feel comfortable with where where it's at. And even today, you know, the the good the goodwill statements. Don't don't cut it for me, because we hear that over and over again, then suddenly things happen. And so understanding what those. Controls the municipality has, this is not second guessing the intent or integrity of the. The developer, it's it's, I'm just protecting. What I understand, my responsibility. So having an intimate understanding. And if I in a, I think that's a long com, a longer conversation and should involve Laurie as Mr. Nato as well. But, you know, so for example, one of the missing pieces with this that was handed out was the the trail strategy, and how does that integrate? And when I look at that and in in, yes, they're just concept plans. But the pictures are powerful in understanding. And in, you know, in general. Community, when they see a picture, they think that's reality and we understand, and I know it's not reality, but. It can certainly be reflective of intent. And when we look at the trail strategy, which, thank you to developers. For, you know, bringing that here. It is not reflected in the concept plans, and and those are, to me, are important from the. The visual, emotional aspects of the community, but then ultimately, I'm really interested in. Okay, what what assurances does does the city, because what the public hears, often hears. Is, oh, yes, well, we've got all these processes later on, but it just marched, just marches ahead. And ultimately, developers get what they, you know, are seeking and that that that. Greater understanding of the community is 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 left behind. And so, in in, you know, when I look at. Other developments that have happened in Arrow Heights, there's several of those, and we have more that we're going to, you know, potentially lose. And it's just such a great thing for for the entire community, including the development community, I believe, and I think you've stated that, you know, having that. Strong natural connectivity in your developments is very important. So that that's just some sort of general statements on that.
Mr. Kelly, you were going to speak.
The the the, I think one of the fundamental advantages to a large C D zone versus some of these small independent ones. Is that in a large development, part of the issue with with with. The resort area now is it's, there's blocks of it that aren't controlled by the parent developers, so creating connection through through, I think it's area five. Four. You know, these, when a when a when a when a C D eight is consolidated, zone is consolidated or C D zone is consolidated. Sorry, I'm trying to find that ownership map. Puts it out, right here it is. So. The. It it allows to look at the greater connection, and so you can you can look at a project within it and say, how is it going to connect here? How's it going to connect there? So trails, multimodal connectivity, whether it's wild trails. Paved all access trails, so people that have mobility challenges can still use a trail system. Those sorts of things are all detailed designer review, just like sewer pipes, streetlights. And and environmental concerns, they're all downtime subdivision and development permit, but those connections. Those connections are invaluable in resort communities. That's what makes people want to be there, want to come back, and that's what creates value. So we do have, we did share a slide we found late last week. That was just up on the screen, and it shows the sort of overall Revelstoke trails plan, so it goes out through the. That one, so it goes all the way out through through into Arrow Heights, it connects, you can see it's much greater than just the resort. And then through the resort, and these trails are of different hierarchy of use, so that paved. Valley trail that you see in Whistler, it's detached from the roadway, travels its own grade, it's got a detached experience, and, you know, it's got greenery around. valley trail that you see in Whistler, it's detached from the roadway, travels its own grade, it's got a detached experience, and you know, it's got greenery around it. But it's still a paved trail, you can push a stroller on or or run a mobility scooter or something like that on. And then there's all sorts of sort of wildland connections as well. So these are the connections that that have been identified through that collaboration with the public service, with Paul and their team and Steve Brogdon's team. And these are the things, these are the lenses that are protected under the policy in the O C P that will need to make it into the development permit. And we have the advantage of being able to look at a much larger piece rather than an ident- small identified piece within a larger community. That's one of the advantages of being in a master plan community. But you're not going to see trails identified on a concept plan at this stage. Because the same reason you're not going to have landscape entrance features, or hydrants, or any of those details, they're just not going to make it at this stage. But these connections, the environmental value, the form and character are all protected in the O C P as well. So this came from a collaboration through the development permit for the golf course. And golf builder and operators here today as well, there, he's got wildland trails planned through the golf course to get down to Williamson Lake that we would need to collaborate again with 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 staff on to make sure, because, you know, in time, well, in short order, we'll be connecting down into public land. Actually found this slide last night. This is actually, it's a very blunt sort of picture of the two subdivided areas. Now, you can see the city park on the on the west side. And everything between the red and the green, all the way to Camosie is also a city park. These are new ones that are in the process of being subdivided as a condition of the development of the golf course.
Council Palmer.
Again, quite. So just, can we just go back to that slide? Just a tad. Peter and I did talk about this a little bit. So I'll pose it as a question. So we we show the city on the red.
Yep.
So so I'm just going to concentrate on the north end of Williamson Lake.
Yeah.
There's a piece that's, it looks like it's essentially a riparian zone between the lake and the city owned land. Can you comment why? Why that is not under?
Because the surveyor general does not take land below high watermark and attribute it, it's for sure, it doesn't belong to anybody.
Swan.
It's for sure.
Yeah.
Sometimes I don't mean underwater.
It's for sure. It doesn't belong to the resort.
Okay, so that's federal jurisdiction essentially on Williamson Lake. I guess, you know, when I look along, of course, it's pretty steep.
Yeah, everywhere else is steep, yeah.
You're showing a one little piece.
Yeah, the inconsistency there has everything to do with water level. And Williamson Lake is is not a tailwater, so it's it's a free fresh perished lake, so it varies with spring runoff.
So on, if I can on this, because, so this does tie tie to the the, you know, the the zone four and five. Because I'm I'm interested, I think the community is interested, okay, that connectivity into the north end of the the lake, and I don't see why that couldn't be on concept plans and maybe more ground truthing as we go through approvals, but it won't get.
I can tell you really quickly why. Because our environmental consultants tell us not to put any human access into riparian area without study first, do not even indicate it. That is the best advice we have from biologists that we rely on. So that's where we, whether whether the values of Williamson Lake are going to be prioritized around the environment or recreation is a decision for the public, not for us. So if you talk to people who are interested in certain type of aquatic habitat, human, human access and and environmental values, and we see this right up to the national park level, there are constant tension.
Yeah.
We, as private interests, we can see this is why this subdivision plan is like this. It's not our place to make that decision. This is a council decision, not our decision.
Right. So just a quick, can you carry on? So the red, why, why, why does zone just, this is just an answer question, why looks reasonably extensive? Do you know why this this 1.2 hectares is why it's going out there, why that?
I think that's the low, low lying area of the of the riparian area, the the downfall essentially.
Okay, so it's above the high watermark, but still riparian. So it has
And actually, there's
development.
I think the existing trail that exists there runs along Coricano on the border. Yeah.
You see the trail is there?
So on one, one of the things, so we talked about if this is, looks like the title goes right in the lake. The connect, so I think most people here have, you know, been around, around the lake, the north end of the lake. And so there's a sort of a natural little area that's and we have the city, of course, on the east side, city, city owned land, and then the park, Williamson Lake Park. This land here, you own this parcel here.
That's right.
And where the opportunity, because if if we're limited to high watermark, yes, you can sort of get by there, but it's not that those community values, I don't know if you can speak to that at all?
We all may be some help.
So we, for the
And if I, I'll just say, you know, really super bluntly, I I would like to see better public through fair, through through the property on that. And
You mean it's a pathway around the way?
Yeah, the pathway. So right now, we're probably, probably everybody that's, you know, goes around for the most part is probably trespassing on your land. And going through here. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, and and so looking after those community values. And and I won't get too hung up on that right now, because that's separate from the other than the flexibility that does that flexibility in the table apply to this property as well?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So it is relevant then.
So so I would say that there is some development entitlement down here. But in terms of when there's a development application, trails, roads, civil, all of that stuff would be detailed and reviewed per the the guidelines within the O C P. But I will point out that we dedicated a public road from where this mouse is today, or sorry, from here to the to the edge of the water this year. For no fee, no payment. It was a, it just enhanced the road right away. So you know where the where the little trail is that runs down to the dock? That is now a full width right away. There's a water line under there. We worked with Director Black on on doing that. I had a question from our guys, so are we selling them some land to get them access to Williamson Lake? And I said, no, this is this is, this is something that would need to happen. And when we came forward with a development application on this parcel, this would be a requirement at that time anyways. And it's good planning. And we also have an agreement in principle to not limit trespass along the front. So this just provides easier access. So I I do feel that we are, at least in the in more recent you know, times, we are trying to to demonstrate good faith with with staff. We've spent a lot of time working with the public service. And we've tried to take actions like this one to demonstrate that we are partners in community building. We we've been mostly a resort operator for the last decade. But, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about change and moving forward on this, that's what we're looking to do, and things like that are part of that step.
Any further questions regarding protection?
That's good for now for me.
Counselor Stapenhurst, any concerns from your perspective regarding?
Well, sir, thank you.
So I think, you know, what I'm hearing from the resort is what, somewhere what I'm hearing in the community is that we want to make sure that there is access, that it's protected in a way that we're not having been built right up to the edge. And that we're, you know, being able to access those sorts of things. Those are are important, important things. I'm taking one step further, because we have our gentleman from Cabot here. And so one of the things that I'm hearing from the community is runoff. Golf course runoff, fertilizer runoff, those sorts of things now. We know that's on the provincial government to monitor those sorts of things, and it's on you as an operator to monitor, and we know it's in your best interest to make sure it's there. However, our community members are saying, yeah, we are not comfortable that the provincial government is going to come to the table and look at those sorts of things. So we're now looking at the municipal government and the operator to make sure that Williamson Lake is protected in that way. So I'm asking you for your comment and how how the community is guaranteed that state.
Very good question, because you're, I think you're absolutely right. My my requirements will be to send an annual report to province. I'm not sure what the city requires, but I know in municipalities is quite common. So happy to cooperate or put the city on anything they want to know.
And so, you know, when we know that you you have to put in reports quarterly or whatever in regards to those sorts of things and and making sure that we don't want to hear after the fact that, oops, we made a mistake. And we know that it's in your best interest to make sure that doesn't happen. But is there anything that you can say now to the community, listen, we're using X, Y, Z? I'm not asking to get any details, but, you know, to make sure that those things are going to be taken care of. From a, from a golf course perspective, you never want to be the bad guy, oops, we made a mistake. But also, you know, my, my, my concern is, you know, when I, when I speak with my staff, and they basically say there are so many levels of protection put in place there, and it's in your best interest. Is there anything that you can say at this point that reassures them?
It's a convoluted question. Sure. And I'll tell you why. It's because if you're talking about applied products according to the golf course, you know, what you said about oops, making a mistake is essentially it's essentially, that's the stopper right there. It's my responsibility to make sure that anything that goes on the property stays on the property, regardless if it's Williamson Lake, or Locks Creek, or my irrigation pond, or my neighbor next door. And everything I do within my management regime is focused on keeping everything I can in property, even right now with sediment erosion control. So that is the most current example I can tell you is we have asked Associated Environmental to provide us with a plan to execute, and we're exceeding it. Right? So they come in, they present a plan. I go and implement it, and they come back and they evaluate that plan. And every time they've done that, I'm exceeding that plan. The same will will happen with applied products or or my application technology, or me as an applicator in the education, and I'm getting my confront to the table, hiring a professional myself to to oversee the whole facility.
So you've answered what I wanted, even though it's a convoluted question. That is the point I was trying to get at, was like the onus is on you, you're going to do that, no matter what property is around yours, you're going to make sure that's taken care of. And that's really what, so now I'm going to go onto a question, and one of my counselors had given me last week, and it's it's about protection of Turtle Creek and some of the other creeks that come down the mountain. It's way over and above what we're talking about as far as tax amendment. But it's imperative to the community to hear these protections. And so now I'm going to go to Mr. Keller, because you're in the building on those sorts of things. We've had problems, oops, in the past with whatever had been. And so, you know, we have members of our community, they don't forget. And so they're basically, you know, keeping our feet to the fire, saying, okay. You know, those who elected me said, remember where we came from, remember what we've been obligated. And so we're remembering. How do we, how do we say to them, yes, you're hearing what they're saying?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think to expand on what Bradley was talking about around the golf, I mean, there's construction and and operations.
Right.
In construction, we've got third party professionals that are there, and they're taking, and the sampling regime is sometimes twice daily through construction when they're active on the hill. And we had some challenges this year with the lake fresh jet, as well as up mountain with some minor instability areas that created some mud events. But, you know, I I drive between here and the North Okanagan quite often. And the the little lakes between here and and Griffin are have the same color at the same time. But we were able to, there was some some challenges with that this spring. The Ministry of Environment and the Ministry of Forests had came and investigated. They took, it was a professional, a professional dialogue between them and and our third party professionals. And that's one of the first things I did when I I joined is I looked at the environmental regime. And we do have some great local environmental consultants. But and we have some people on the team that help on the environmental side, but we we doubled down. We basically said, okay, who are the leaders in this industry, understand the regulation, understand Section 11 Water Protection Act, the permitting, how to manage through the permit, make sure that we're compliant and and move forward. So we've done those things. And we're going to apply that same rigor to any other any other water course infringing product or project going forward. So, I mean, as a, as an operator, you're running a an ongoing business, but you're not really adding to it very much. You you need a different team. When you're, when you're looking at at changing a landscape, when you're adding a building, or you're adding adding other improvements like a golf course, you need a you need a person that's a group of qualified group of multi specialist people looking at it so that we can guarantee compliance.
Great. Counselor Stapenhurst.
Just a question in regards to the environmental consultants that's hired. How could the public be reassured that their their reporting isn't to their, you know, isn't to the benefit of their employer, but to the public?
They'll lose their license.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, the the ministry's got some pretty active tools that if they find them out of line, it becomes very hard for them to earn a living.
Great. Thank you. Sure.
I appreciate your candor on that. With those, with that answer. Counselor Palmer, further questions regarding Williamson Lake? Do you have any further?
That's all for the moment.
Okay. Counselor Cherry.
Just for some clarification, because it came up at a previous meeting. Williamson Lake has provincial regulations. Is there any federal in there as well, due to the fact that there's fish?
There is. D F O has a D F O has purview on Williamson Lake because of the small fish population, the sculpted population. Stockfish is not necessarily something they look at a lot, but there is a D F O referral on the on the golf course permit as well.
So there's already two levels of government?
Yeah.
In place?
Well, three, because D P, D P one from the city has a and then there are conditions that will come out with final construction. And then there'll be conditions of the operating permit. And I think, I think it's probably a good idea for you to expand on Cabot's relationship with 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 global firms that deal with, like the Audubon Society. And, you know, how how this golf course will get built, how it will get maintained, and the experience and and what Cabot wants to deliver to the market. I'm pretty excited about it, because I've been involved with a bunch of golf courses. And not all of them have had operators that are that are interested in this sort of level of commitment. And so this is one of the things that that did attract me to this project. Certainly, Jason, you know, I I came from Nova Scotia, where our last project had eleven eleven golf greens along the Atlantic Ocean Capit cliffs, beautiful, beautiful site, thirty six hole facility. We're at the other golf course, you know, on the Atlantic Ocean, so fully used to working in around water bodies. We partnered with the Audubon, Audubon International, just to give you some statistics on Audubon and our involvement with them, because you've brought it up. They have over a thousand members globally in Canada, seventy seven, British Columbia thirteen. And we are registered, this golf course and this property as the first platinum partner they they will ever have. So that that's a pretty unique situation to be in. The second one that's registered is our sister property in Florida called Citrus Farms. So out of Nova Scotia, there's three three Audubon sanctuaries. One of them is Crow Bush Cove, and the other two are Capit Mix and Capit Cliffs, which make up a total. So we consider ourselves as putting ourselves in a meat market, our meat, our meat opportunity to be partners with people that are driving sustainability through their whole property, not just the golf course, but into reloaching other amenities, paths, and these are these are the things that will have on the golf course. Currently working with Ron Glaive and the beekeepers as well to introduce more pollinating habitat on property, not just bees, but actually pollinating habitat as well. And the architects that build golf, the type of golf is different. It is designed to the architects will be physically the people building the golf course, it will not be a contractor. So with that, there's a lot less and lot less I guess you could call it, footprint. And there's a lot less earth. It's it's basically putting golf in its natural state as much as you possibly can.
Counselor Palmer.
So just shifting to a golf course a little bit, maybe not directly related, but it's all, I guess it's all related. So on the, on the golf course, can you speak to public access? public access through the trails and what that looks like?
Yeah, I can. I definitely wanted to jump in there.
Before, before I relay that, I'll just relay a, a story. Uh, I'm a terrible golfer. I'll, I'll get.
Yes. I'll get.
That's an insult to terrible golfers, by the way.
It is, it is. Um, so I'll, I'll, the last time I golfed was a few decades, decades ago in Whistler. And, uh, and I won't relay the whole story because it'll take too long, but I'll talk about the one experience. So, uh, it was a problem because it was a foursome put together and there were some serious golfers. It was a huge problem. But anyway, there was one, uh, every, every, every time it was a problem. Uh, anyway, the one time, uh, yeah, so I, wherever the golf ball was, I hit the thing, uh, a little bit better than I normally was that day. And, and went flying over the high chain link fence, uh, and, uh, I hit a cyclist. I didn't hit the cyclist, I hit the bike. So, uh, but anyway, I, I just, it's anyway, that experience, that experience and then what's happening here in Rebelstoke. So just, you know, so what does this look like? And I mentioned that because of the conflicts that can, that can occur with golfing. Uh, and then with our current golf course, which is heavily used by the public. It's, and it belongs to the city. And I think it's important for us to remember that's a community asset. Um, uh, it, between dogs and, uh, winter use, summer use and the, and those conflicts. So that's just sort of a backdrop. And so if you could sort of speak to, to us, what this golf course, what opportunities for public access?
I, I think, I think you said right there. I think you have to start looking at this golf course with the same lens as you do the other one and consider it in your community and part of your community. And, and benefit of having someone like me be here is because I'm also a community member. And I, I think I can work with the group here to say, okay, what if you want to access? I think that's something I can, I think I have an, an answer to your question and your problem with access into Williamson Lake. And I think the golf course can be that conduit. Remember this community, you know, we're only going to be able to golf out in half months. So what is, what makes up the other seven and a half months of the season? It's winter activities and the golf course is the perfect landscape to, to do exactly what you just said. Have, and operate a lot of animals, people to cross-country ski and provide even more direct access to Williamson. I would argue right now that there's more access to Williamson Lake now than with the golf being there. Uh, and you, I can, I can show you some of this that's, you know, not necessarily in a development permit plan. But where I, where I can put the trails back that you, you walk across a block every day. Uh, they're all there. I found them. I use them now. And so does the people that take my water quality test are using all those trails right now. So for example, the seventh green, you know, is now on top of a trail. I'll connect that into the back of the green and that trail has not disappeared as an example.
So I, I'm certainly open to hear that. I don't know if, uh,
Absolutely.
Yeah, to see what that looks like.
So, and I don't mean to block, block you here, but this is, this is a trail that's, would have been existing through two golf holes right now. Okay? The golf green being probably right where that mouse is.
Right.
So now I can connect that trail. I can just go around the golf green. This is a, this is a depression. It's deep. It's really deep. It's a ravine. I can connect that trail right, right here. Or even come down, even come down more of the, along the creek. It's more, more attractive. So that trail doesn't go away. And this is now a golf course, which I would argue in the wintertime, you can just walk across the golf course. Right? To connect to those trails. Same thing with hole number two. This is all hole number two, hole eighteen and hole one. That's, that's now a feeder, you know, access down, down into that, what do you call it? The west side of the lake. It's all there. Instead of the trail maybe being what currently existed down the center of the golf hole now gets put to the side. I walk the property all the time and I constantly see where the traffic's going and I'll learn from that and adjust.
So counselor, um, you know, when we're talking about trails and access to trails and whatnot, I just want to kind of clarify in my mind, uh, so some places that I've been, my family goes down to Palm Springs, Palm Desert in the wintertime. And there's trails, natural trails, paved trails, all kinds of trails around, privately owned, privately operated golf courses. And, and it integrates the community through that. So what I'm envisioning is that sort of thing. So whether one is a golfer and taking their cart going from, you know, trying to get to their terrible golf ball off the trail back under the, under the fairway. Or whether, you know, uh, mom and a child are walking in their carriage along that trail. Uh, they still have access, even though there's golf activities going on during the day. I'm understanding, if I'm understanding correctly, that we're still going to have that continuity to go along those trails, even if there's active golfing. Is that correct?
As long as it's safe, we can put the trail somewhere.
That, that's kind of what I mean.
So, so the wildland trails will go through the trees, which naturally becomes safer. But part of the, the master, the Maltese path agreement with the city as it comes up through Nickel and now down the realignment. I think once we get past the Mackenzie Village roundabout, that path will start to feel different. It'll detach from the road. It'll start to travel with the terrain. Um, Director Black and, and our team have been working through that. That will go all the way to the village and then down through and back to the south end of Williamson Lake. So that paved all access, uh, trail for, for that, for that maybe mobility impaired. But maybe the, the wild trail, you know, especially during the spring season and the fall season and maybe through the winter, that trail will be maintained and, and operated as part of our program.
Yeah. Counselor, I didn't mean to deviate from what you were asking, but so any further questions regarding trails? Counselor Turk.
No, you've addressed all the issues I've brought up about trails.
That may, maybe I will have to ask a question. And, uh, so on the opportunities, so from the, the resort perspective. And so there's been reference to cross-country skiing. Do you see a market opportunity, uh, from the, the resort base going into that area for utilization?
Um, yeah, like a straight answer, yes. I mean, have we contemplated exactly what, what programming we want to do? No. Um, but we're going to have, you know, uh, short-term, short-term folks and residents in the zone. And I couldn't imagine not having program beyond this beautiful piece of land. Right. People don't have access if they want to use it. Maybe snow sharing, cross-country trails. Um, and yeah, we look forward to that because for, there aren't a lot of opportunities right in that zone because it gets steep fast. And it's the winter skiing, it's downhill skiing pretty much exclusively. And for you to actually go and just be, be out in nature. And so that is the zone. We see that being that opportunity.
So a limited opportunity, so not, probably not to the extent of like Silver Star, you know, where there's, you know, this integration. Or do you see that?
The challenge, I mean, the, the challenge with, with, uh, cross-country skiing at that, it's just, it's the elevation.
Yeah, yeah. It's, and the terrain is difficult for you.
Not so much the terrain, it's, it's the temperature. We just have such inconsistent temperatures year over year at that elevation. Hence why we want to build snow linking further up because it's not, it's not getting better. This year's an, this year's an exception. Um, actually last year was an exception. We, you know, where it'd just be like about length of season you have or reasonable.
Right. Got you. Okay.
Counselor Sturridge.
Just a quick question in regards to like the economic benefit of this golf course to Rebelstoke. What does that kind of, do you have any figures for, for the public on, on what kind of benefit that brings to the public and what kind of tourism dollar do we can see from that or?
I don't, I don't think I have that answer.
Thank you.
So then counselor, um, you know, one of, one of the things that we're hoping or one of the things that, uh, we look at from municipal golf courses, having two golf courses in the community means that we now have people staying in the community to play golf. Uh, versus coming in, playing their, their eighteen holes and now they're, now they're leaving. And so the ability to have two golf courses may solidify visitor, uh, stays. And so that in, in my mind would be whether they're coming and they're going to spend their time at the resort, play in the resort golf course, play Cabot, and then they're going to stay the next day to play our municipal. Or vice versa, whatever the case may be. And, you know, when I, when I talk to golfers or, and so, so some of my friends who golf all over the place, let them come to Rebelstoke for its beauty and it's a cheer course. But they're also looking for new, new things to do. And so I think if we get them here for one, we've probably got them here for two. And let's hope that they're staying overnight and, uh, enjoying our hospitality for that night and golf again. Counselor Devlin, do you have any questions or concerns at this point?
Um, I do not have any questions. I think the original presentation handled all of the questions I would have fairly well. This has gone quite a bit off topic, uh, running out of the table, but that's okay. This is all useful information. I did have a comment. I just wanted to clarify. I'm sure everybody at this table knows, maybe people watching at home don't. Uh, we were not being asked to consider allowing density shifting. We were being asked to text amend a bylaw to allow an application for density shifting in the future. And I think that's a really important distinction to make. We weren't even really being asked to approve that. We were being asked to give that a second reading to go to a public hearing. So that is just something I would like to make clear is that we seem to have gone off in this magical conversation about carte blanche density shifting, but that wasn't really what was on the table.
Okay. We should, your comment. Counselor Palmer.
Yeah, thank, thank you to, to, uh, Counselor Devlin. I guess just from my, my perspective, I, I disagree. The text amendment does give more entitlements to the developer for, for density. Uh, as it stands, so for example, on, uh, section five, which has immediate need. And, and again, I'll state that I'm not opposed to it as long as it's done right. But now with this text, without the text amendment, their density would be very, very limited. And that's the whole purpose behind the, uh, is to provide that, maybe that, not the whole purpose, but a big, and then the bigger part is flexibility. Cause once we give density, we're not going to be giving it, taking it away. And we can talk about it shifting around, but I think it's important to distinguish the, the difference. So that's, and that's what's important for me.
I would just counter that by saying, um, that is neither here or there because the text amendment would not allow them to shift anything. The text amendment would allow them to apply for shifting. We would still need to approve the specific shifts. And if you didn't like the specific shifts and if you want to talk about it being done right, that is a thing you can vote with when that comes before us. But all this would do is allow them to apply for that, which I think is a reasonable ask. And I think it can still be shot down if we don't like the specific density shifting. Once we see what that looks like. These are conceptual ideas of what they might choose to do. This is all based on geo-truthing. This is all based on environmental things. They've already stated all of this. That's what I mean in the first presentation covered all of this. Um, so what they're asking for is a legal ability to apply for density shifting potentially in the future, which is an entirely different thing than asking for density shift.
Mr. Simon, comment.
Through your worship to all of, uh, committee, yes, still subject to city approval. So trying to flesh out exactly what that looks like, but what I envisioned is that council would need to pass a resolution authorizing the density at a future point in time when the application makes a request. Very clear in the text of the amending bylaw that it says that it's still subject to approval of the city.
Great. Thank you for that comment. Thank you, Counselor Devlin, Counselor Palmer. Further discussion on that matter? Counselor Lucille.
Uh, thank you, officials. Um, just a question for clarity. So when we talk about the, um, land that is being given to the city, um, up above Williamson Lake, um, I was under the understanding that everything in the CD zone was owned by the municipality. So, or, but owned by the resorts. So how does that shift of ownership happen? And would that be considered for zone five for the city to, um, look into building housing? Or are you guys wanting to keep that whole zone for yourself?
Mr. Calder. Um, so can you bring the map back?
Yeah, please. So this is the technical map of the zones. So this is five, four. Um, uh, uh, this is, this is actually, this is the city's park right here.
Right.
Um, so I, I'm, the, the land that's getting dedicated around Williamson Lake is, is, uh, result of a dialogue with, with public service around, uh, the, the city taking a larger amount of parkland earlier on than the city's entitled to, rather than trying to get it snippet by snippet through each subdivision application, which is not a typical in a master plan development. Typically, the, the land title act entitles this municipality to five percent of subdivided area for the purposes of park dedication or cashing move. Now, five percent of ten lots is very little and five percent of the next ten lots is very little. So when you start dealing with large CD zones, master planned areas, it's beneficial to both the developer and to the city to identify areas of community value, identify large enough blocks of average community value. And then through a, through an agreement, either dedicate this, those lands to the city and that is transfer entitled. It now belongs to the city. It's in the public hands. It's not an easement. It's not some other type of agreement. Once it's dedicated, it's dedicated. So that's, that's how that works. That, that, those pieces around Williamson Lake are part of a parkland dedication. Again, one of the, as far as I could tell, wasn't dedicated yet due to some legal issues. The one to Camozie and to the, uh, uh, east side of the lake is, is done. Um, but the other one, and I have subdivision plans for them. I believe they're both signed. I think it's just between our council and, and, uh, by council, I mean our lawyers and the city's lawyers, it's just not done. Um, that, those two pieces, those one point, whatever hectare and two point, whatever hectare, far exceed the application for subdivision requirements under the act. So essentially the, the developer, uh, through request of staff of the day, most of the staff that were here through that weren't here. Um, wanted to protect that area, um, in advance of future subdivisions. So it's a, it's basically a, a park dedication bank that now the developer would have with the city.
So that answers your question, counsel?
Yes, yes. So in terms of the lower land for housing, that's retained development land that the developer wants to go.
Counselor Turk.
I was just hoping we could see page, uh, nine. I think it better illustrates it. Too far.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah. So I've got the mouse here for the public who's watching. This park is dedicated. This is long owned by the city. This one is subdivided. I believe it's registered. I couldn't find it on the, on the, the land title website. I did look after last week's council meeting. I do have a signed subdivision plan for it though, and the same with this one.
Ms. Floyd, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry. Mr. Black, I was just asking if you were paying attention. Counselor Lucille.
Uh, thank you. Um, this question would be more for, uh, Mr. Simon. Um, when we talk about if we're allowing shifting into, shifting density into zone five and, um, developers wanting to restrict the deed, where is council's ability to allow to stop that from happening? Or is that solely on the proponent and their planning development?
That is a very good question. Uh, through your worship to Counselor Lucille, uh, very, very good question. And the best answer I could give right now is that that's going to be something that's a further conversation at that point in time. We actually see the shifting and what specifics of that covenant looks like. Is it something that's between, so when you draft these agreements, is the developer entering into it with themselves? So that they're able to discharge it at their will, or they're entering into it with the city where the city would need to sign off on any potential discharge? So that's a conversation that we haven't had with the proponent yet because again, that's when we get into that detailed design phase that we started looking at putting those covenants on title. Um, but that's certainly a conversation that we will, uh, we will be having with the proponent. So very good question.
Thanks.
And that would happen before we would see any development permits coming towards us?
Uh, through, through your worship, yes, or it would be happening concurrently with that process. Like what you might see is that, you know, what we bring forward is a recommendation to approve the permit with a preconditioned issuance that the covenant be registered on title. We just need to be very careful because in this case it is, uh, it is a voluntary commitment from the developer. It's not like we have something that's within the development permit area guidelines that we'd be able to rely upon for legal purposes if it was ever challenged. Um, but again, the intent is to work with the developer in good faith so that when we're looking at requiring these things and we're looking at requiring them at certain stages of the process, that there's, there's no, you know, contemplation of a legal challenge about the city stepping outside its jurisdictional authority. Is that?
Yeah.
I know it's a bit of a convoluted answer, but there's certainly some behind the scenes conversations that need to happen before we've been at a point that we're able to break something forward for council consideration.
I can, I can expand on that as well if you like. Um, a, a landowner, a developer, landowner has, there's a number of tools that can be applied to their title prior to transacting it. So when the purchaser buys it, they commit to those things that are on title. One of them's statutory building scheme we talked about earlier. It's registered in favor of the developer. A rent charge on title that, that commits the people who buy it to contributing to common amenities. Things like trail maintenance. Things like common landscaping, things like that. But maybe as part of this CD zone, this, this comprehensive development zone. That we would require people who live in that zone to contribute to. And those are all registered in favor of the developer. Um, and other restrictions around use that are outside of the zoning by law. The municipalities, um, you can either do it through a development agreement, but once it once a municipality steps outside of their zoning by law. It's easily challenged at the court level, whereas a developer, you know, when you buy a private, when an individual buys something from another. Individual or corporation, they agree to that. It's contractual agreement rather than a policy agreement.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Councillor Church and councillor Paul.
Uh, just to piggyback that a bit, when you talk about residential building schemes and covenants, especially when they're developer led. I guess my question's going to be is uh where the check is balances aside from a piece of paper, who's going to enforce them? I know it's on the developer. We've seen multiple developments in town where those building schemes aren't being uh. Pursued, we'll say, uh, by residents and they're not being.
So the the most successful ones that I've seen are are ones where the scheme is registered on in favor of both the developer and all the other lots in the neighborhood. So if the lot gets neighbor, you're you're entitled to the same. As a lot owner, you're entitled to the same protections that your neighbor can expect from you. And and usually, um, for not much money, you can get a a a letter from a lawyer and then from the court requiring compliance. And it keeps the municipality out of it because the municipality, you know, these aren't bylaws. These are, these are residential agreements between people in common. So, uh, and you know, the taxpayer doesn't really have a role in enforcing that sort of thing. That's a developer. Then that they need to set up the and sell herself police with him. Now, if everybody in a in a twenty lot subdivision has this thing and everybody gets together and agrees that they don't want to follow this, developer doesn't have much stick. But uh as soon as one of them wants it, they can petition the courts for compliance and it's a pretty straightforward process.
Councillor Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Solz. I was just gonna, I was gonna. Further to councillor Lucio was on, uh, you were talking about the the land titles and stuff like that. It's the next question, of course, is city land or strata and all that kind of stuff, but definitely we're drilling down to a deeper uh level there. Uh, the comment about, uh, you know, what we can do, you know, the the like. Forced amenity contributions is it will set up to uh legal challenges and that's some of the stuff that I'm very cognizant of. And so we can have, you know, very good goodwill, but maybe you get bought up by, I don't know who, but uh somebody from China or something. But uh, the uh, you know, that, you know, what's that relationship look like in the in the in the future? Um, and that's really the essence. And I I, so I I guess maybe just to sum up from my perspective, this has been very, very valuable for me. I I very much appreciate the work that you're doing and the diligence uh and, you know, getting back to the conversation. Um, uh, to me, it's 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 super important to me as a, you know, representing the constituents that are talking to me on a regular basis and and those values. Um, so I appreciate that and uh, you know, there's, you know, I might have opinions. So like people in the community might have opinions on, you know, whether a golf course should be there or not. Well. Uh, that's that is an entitlement and it's just that's going to be. So I, to me, I I'm not I'm not going to even have that conversation. Because I understand that when I'm looking at the future and protecting those community values, that's really where I'm trying to uh. Maximize our ability to make sure that we're consistent and uh of where we're going for the community. So, but thank you very, very much and thanks for the rest of council for your patience. I know I've kind of dominated some of the conversation.
But this is the answer. This is what I wanted for today. So this is what I wanted to make sure that everybody has the answers that they want. Where whether it pertains to the issue that we dealt with in council or not, having the issues as to what you're hearing from the community. And your ability to understand better what RMR's potential is and what they plan to be. One of the, one of the benefits to me is the fact that the ownership right now likes to buy things and keep them. And for me, that's some sort of security, whether whether it goes around the table for everybody, but that's some sort of security that the things that we allow to go in place will be there. And the ability to work together to make things go forward is really what's going to make this whole project in our community work. And so for for this uh individual myself, as we look at it and we look about moving densification and how we move. And able to see housing along Nickel Road up to Camozzi Road all the way up in a way that. Uh, those who come from out of our community coming in won't be able to tell what's uh, what's originally Rebelstoke and what's now Resort. Because it all amalgamates into a way that that works for everybody and and seeing that. And for these people being here willing to hear our concerns about that, I think that's imperative as we move forward. And we give consideration to really what's going on. Um, so thank you, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the diligent with staff and, you know, bringing this back to us. Um, I do have one question. So Mr. Pahwich is here and and hasn't had a chance to speak. Can we fly fish into Williamson Lake?
Sure.
Will we be success?
You want to know what to use?
I want you to come teach us.
Let's do it.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other questions from council at this point? Any concerns that you have that we haven't addressed, whether it's through prior uh engagement with RMR. Or uh now with what we've got before us will eventually come to us again at some point. What are your concerns? Have we addressed all of your concerns? If not, I want to hear them. Councillor Stapiers.
I don't have any concerns, sir. I just wanted to echo my gratitude uh to all the staff, yourself, uh. The gentlemen from RMR and Cabot Golf Course for showing up today and giving us this opportunity to to better understand what's in front of us. So I appreciate everybody taking the time out of their busy schedule and uh being here today. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions, councillor Lucio?
Um, yeah, I would just love to say thank you for this presentation. It's definitely been very informative. Um, the only thing I would ask about would be transportation to everybody to the resort. We're wanting to keep everybody on Nickel and through Camozzi. Um, are you guys developing or encouraging people to go? Through the end of Camozzi down to uh, it's not Catharwood, but the one that connects on Airport Way? Or are you trying to keep all of the traffic on Camozzi?
I would say we're not actively trying to do either. Um, uh, the air, the parking lots where they're situated today. Probably encourage most people to take airport and uh, or sorry, Nickel and uh and Camozzi. Um, as the airport, as the, sorry, as the parking transitions to the south. I could see a a significant splitting of traffic that would travel straight through airport and and up. I find uh more of the locals tend to go up the other that way. Uh, our staff certainly do because they park on that end.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's it's a, we don't have an active strategy to drive traffic one way or another. The strategy is pretty limited. There's a little bit of municipal signage in that so we get.
It's way more scenic. I go that way.
Yeah.
Our transit system though is going up through Airport Way, Nickel Road, Camozzi and Parry's. Yeah, we're talking width of roads, uh, security, we're not going down that back loop. Um, and we're we're staying out of that residential neighborhood. And what I mean residential, more rural, pardon me, rural neighborhood.
And you want that transit link coming through the where there is density, which is.
Yeah. That's the whole idea is to utilize transit. So we've got, thank you for that. And then those who are on bikes will go whichever way is, that's what the idea of the trail system.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and then I think just the school safety around Airport Way. We hear more and more. People raising concerns about the speed people can easily carry down that hill and um just the unsafe. Actions that we've heard from, I don't know if it's necessarily tourists or locals here in town, um, but just kind of what we can do to. Ensure the safety of residents and children around that area. Um, and then if the stop sign at airport and Nickel, um, the four way stop is going to be adequate. With future developments or if that will to be addressed as roundabout.
That's already the plans. Mr. Black, you want to speak to that?
Certainly, thank you for your question. And council, um, boy, I believe it was just last year. It could have been a year and a half though at this point. Um, uh, staff did commission a study for South Rebelstoke Transit Transportation to look at buildup conditions. For including the buildup of this resort, Mackenzie Village, Stoke Living, the Gun Club, uh, the Saw Mill and Selkirk Lands. To develop the comprehensive plan at buildup so that we knew exactly what was going to occur. With those lands at the current zoning that they're allowed. And in that process, we determined that roundabouts would be the best solution for us as there's minimal. Operational cost to run for change light bulbs. There's no electricity. Um, so there's a a future roundabout going in at Mountain Camozzi, the one that was built with uh Mackenzie Village. The city and RMR in partnership, which was completed last year. And then the last one will be at Airport Nickel.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any further comments from our down here? Do you have any comment, Mr. Keller, Mr. Nielsen?
Um, yeah, just again, I'll just reiterate what I started with and uh thank you all for your time. Uh, I recognize that everyone's uh, um, you know, sacrificed some time to let us uh talk to you about the resort. But I do really feel it's a standby session, you know, for, and, um, you know, you don't, it's always, you always get a great opportunity to have a two way communication with council. So really do appreciate that. Um, and, you know, and and like I said at the beginning, we are, we definitely would like to commit to. To having more frequent uh two way conversations with council. Um, and the more frequent you are, probably the shorter our sessions. So, so again, your worship and counsel, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Council, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I will call for a motion to terminate. Moved by councillor Paul, seconded by councillor Stapiers, don't have a favor. Motion's carried. This meeting is terminated.